Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you to the Orange County Public School, School Board Meeting. Mrs. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinton.
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, can I have, Dr. Hornick, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, hearing no adjustments to the agenda, I would so entertain a motion to accept the approval of the agenda, please.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Minutes and financial reports of, let's see, let me see, I can pull them up. Okay, the January 2nd meeting, the February meeting, and the school, okay, nutrition reports. Can I have a motion to accept these?
I move to approve the January 2nd, 2023 regular meeting draft minutes, the February 23 financial report, and the school nutrition report.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Can I get a second? Did anyone say a second?
I'll second.
Okay, sorry. And at this time, the monthly operating bills.
I was able to review the bills, and I approve the February, I move to approve the February 2023 monthly bills as presented.
And I reviewed those as well, so I will second that. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion is approved. Okay, and now I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hornick, for staff member recommendations.
And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to bring Mr. Marshall Rutter forward, and he has three important folks to recognize this evening for some outstanding contributions and assistance that they're providing at Locust Grove Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick, Madam Chair, members of the board. To my right, I introduce Pam Mick, Head Custodian here at Taylor Education Administration Complex. Tina Carter, Head Custodian at Unionville Elementary. And Robert LaBerte, Head Custodian at Locust Grove Primary Elementary School. Reason I bring them here tonight is because we have a shortage at Locust Grove Middle School, and these three head custodians have not only stepped up but have done a great job at cleaning Locust Grove Middle School after they performed their full eight-hour day at their respective schools, and I just wanted to bring them in and recognize them for all their hard work and dedication while we try and come up to a resolution with a problem at Locust Grove Middle.
Thank you.
Bring them over.
(applause)
And our other set for this evening comes from Locust Grove Elementary School. Dr. Oliver Eggerd is here, as well as Ms. Brandy Schumake, so we're happy to have our building administrators, and they have some folks to recognize from Locust Grove Elementary.
Good evening, Board and everyone in the audience. So we have recognitions to do for both staff and students today, and I'd like to be able to start with our students. We had four students who were finalists in our school Spelling Bee, and I'm going to call all their names, but I believe only two are actually here this evening. But our four finalists that I'd like to recognize tonight are Axel Patel, James Pelton, Simeon So these two young men were one of 22 Spelling Bee participants at the school level, and because they were top four finalists, they were able to move on to the county level B, and both students did amazing. Axel actually won the division level B and moved on to participate in the regional B as a fourth grader, which is pretty outstanding.[497.34][497.34](applause) And I can tell you, so I was the pronouncer at the school level B, and I will tell you there were times that we had to Google the correct pronunciations of words, and I feel like I'm an intelligent lady, and I didn't know some of these words that these boys were able to spell. So congratulations once again to both of you for your amazing abilities and participation. Thank you so much.[528.36][528.36](applause) All right, and then for the staff recognitions, Ms. Schumake and I would like to be able to recognize the members of our connect team. So we have Ms. Claudine Jessup, please come up to the front when you hear your name, Julie Hartsfeld, Heidi Pettigen, Lois Davis, and Michelle Brooks.[590.82][590.82](applause) So I could spend some time talking individually about the contributions that each of these ladies make to our school with respect to the subjects that they teach. But part of why I wanted, we wanted to recognize them this evening is because of the level of collaboration that this team is able to do. In order for me to fully describe this, I need to take you on a little trip back in history. Do you remember this past December how we got super frigid temperatures? Everybody remembers? Well, when we returned from winter break, we found our gym was underwater. So a pipe had burst, and we have been without a gym since then so that they could replace the floors. And because of that, we clearly couldn't have PE classes in the gymnasium. This team, without hesitation, was super flexible, super creative, and able to figure out not only how do we offer PE in an exciting and efficient manner, but utilize the spaces that each of them do have within our school so that they were taking on that role and giving the students interactive, fun lessons that still met all the standards for the courses that they each teach. We have had some of the best collaboration among this team. They have been patient, they have been creative. We've had exercises going on in library while they're also learning about library-related things. I believe the name for that was Jibbery, right? We've had teachers going on carts to go to classrooms so that PE could take place in another setting, such as in the art room where the kids were playing foosball on the art tables and things like that. What this team has been able to accomplish out of what I call a tragedy to our gym, because it was a gorgeous gym, and it will be again, but these ladies have gone above and beyond to be able to make it so that our kids still get the experience of every one of their classes, and it's still engaging and fun, effective, and is meeting the standards. So this group has been amazing under difficult circumstances, and we absolutely had to recognize them as a team. So congratulations and thank you for what you're doing.[758.73][758.73](applause)
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Okay, and that's just another fine example of what wonderful staff we have here in our family of Orange County. So thank you again, ladies.
Amen.
All right, at this time, let's see, we will go down and do a little bit of business. We have got, oh, excuse me, public comment, sorry. At this time, I will open public comment. And Ms. Byram, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am, and I will call them up in groups. The first group will be Larry Scott, Gary McFadden, and DJ Anglin.
Point of information, Madam Chair, how many speakers do we have signed up?
Nineteen.
Thank you. I'll give you that already, okay? Thanks.
Good evening, Board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, Ms. Byram, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight to speak on the proposed policy that Mr. Hopkins has drafted for us to vote on, and from what I understand, Mike Jones and Sherri Page have agreed that they're going to vote on this policy as it is written, and I'm a little puzzled because if you remember back in October, Ms. Quinton had a resolution that kind of modeled this policy, it was a little more strongly worded, that you guys weren't even interested in talking about. Ms. Page, if I had an Oscar, I'd give it to you for your performance that night in tears, saying how you couldn't vote for a resolution that wasn't even a policy because a family member, and I guess I won't go into details, but one of your family members was gay and couldn't come out of the closet, whatever. And so what I'm scratching my head about here is how is three members who couldn't vote for a resolution now willing to vote for a policy about gender identity, which shouldn't even be called identity, it should be called gender dysphoria, because if a kid's struggling about whether he's a boy or a girl, there's seriously some mental problems going on. Mr. Hopkins, I want to bring something to light with you because I've been coming to these meetings for the last two years, and I've noticed how you are towards Ms. Page. Sent you an email in January 22, January 16, and I says, "Mr. Hopkins, you seem to be real biased towards Ms. Page, and just the way you act, the way you defend her," and I'm just asking you what's going on with that, because it's very, I've been picking up this thing ever since I've been coming, I've been picking up on this, I don't know if anyone else had read into that or not, and you proudly responded to that email through the school board. It's all public information, if anyone wants to see it. You come out with, "Yes, I am biased with Ms. Page." So you go on to say that you used to date her, you all go to the same church, or you used to go to the same church, went through some lovely romantic venues together, and you even went as far as to give her a Google review at her place of business that you've never even went to before, you even say that in your review, but you say the women there are lovely on the eyes. That review has been since been taken down. So, Mr. Hopkins, what I'm asking you tonight is what are you doing? Let your yes be yes and your no be no. You're jumping on both sides of the fence, and you're bringing all these people back up here tonight. I don't think anyone's going to agree with your policy because it's not worded correctly. It's not going to accomplish anything. How can a principal be in charge of, at Locust Grove Middle School, there's 700 kids there, you've got a principal and a vice principal. How can they be responsible for 700 kids that they do not see every day? Each one of those kids sees six different teachers. You've got to hold these teachers accountable.
Board members and Dr. Hornick, I support our school board's efforts to address parental involvement in gender identity. In a letter last week, I asked our school board members to consider the following legislative changes. Replace the word parent with parent or legal guardian. Replacing the words principals and their designees with texts similar to "all school system personnel." If the intent is to hold all school system employees responsible for an obligation to notify parents, then who are the bespoke designees, and how will these designees be formally identified and made known of their obligations? For those who question why these changes are necessary, please consider two points. Point one, a January 2023 news article covered a story which hopefully will never occur in our community. A 13-year-old girl said she was actually a boy. Teachers at her school started using male pronouns for her, and a counselor gave her a breast binder to wear to create the appearance of a flatter chest. No one told her mother. School personnel encouraged the student to keep everything secret from her parents. Attempts to gain a victim's trust by driving a wedge between them and their parents is the very definition of child predatory sexual grooming. Point two, some parents have been told that if they fail to support a gender-questioning child's desire to transition, then their child may commit suicide. According to a new treatment guide released by GETA, the Gender Exploratory Therapy Association, an association of professionals from the US, UK, Sweden, and Finland, this transition-or-die scenario, which is often used to justify transgender medical treatments, is factually inaccurate and ethically questionable. Fears about suicide have helped drive the trend toward gender transition procedures, wherein therapists readily accept a patient's self-diagnosis, emphasis added, and then assist with transitioning. This process causes a patient to adopt a revamped social identity and to be put on puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and body-altering surgeries. Yet, there is scant evidence that the transition reduces the risk of suicide, according to GETA. Another organization is GenSpec, an Ireland-based nonprofit which also supports exploratory therapy, not immediate medical intervention. Heart-wrenching stories of regret are emerging as more detransitioners publicly reveal stories of being misled into gender transition procedures. Final thought, chemical castration, breast removal, and hysterectomies do not affirm children, they maimed them. Thank you.[1236.33][1236.33](applause)
I find it, hello, school board members, everyone else, I find it very interesting that this topic has come up again. The timing of it is definitely rather interesting. As was stated before, we were here doing this not that long ago on a very similar policy. But even more so, what I found interesting is when this was proposed, and certainly I believe that every parent should be notified if their child is having these thoughts or these questions. It's our rights to know. But what I found really interesting was when it was recommended that an accountability clause for more than just the principal be added, that several of you said, "No, we've never heard of anything like this." That our teachers and administrators, they don't go off the rails, they don't do that. I'm sure you haven't had to oversee a termination of any teacher or administrator because they didn't follow policy? Being a little more restrictive, being a little more confined in holding people accountable to make sure that the parents' rights are protected, that the children's rights are protected, I don't see any problem with that. Not at all. And I don't know why you do either. Now, at that meeting, I watched people change their mind, sitting right here at this table, vote ways they said they weren't going to vote, but they did it anyway. Now, today, I'm hoping that you'll look at this policy and maybe you'll consider it, but if you're going to consider it as written, there's problems with it, because it doesn't hold people accountable. At that last meeting, you wanted specific examples of when the administration went off the rails. See me afterwards, I'll be happy to enlighten you, including something involving my own child. I'll be happy to enlighten you. Where teachers and administrators don't always do the right thing. 90% do, just like in law enforcement, 90% do. They do the right thing most of the time, but there are times when they go off the rails. And hopefully, you as a school board will stop doing that and start looking at these through a practical sense, and not through a few squeaky wheels, but what the majority of your public and the people who are involved in school want, okay? We don't want government school. We want a public school system, involved with the community, involved with everybody here. I don't have a whole lot more to say than that, but hopefully, y'all won't continue to do more of the same. All right? Thank you.[1434.13][1434.13](noise)
The next group, Darlene Dawson, Alan Daniel, and Kim Hoosier.
Good evening, school board and Chair, Dr. Hornick. I honor your service. This is a really difficult thing that you're facing. You have people out here who are on both sides of the issue, and most of us, out of just a really right place in our hearts, we love these children, and we hate to see them make a mistake in their youth that could affect the rest of their lives, will affect the rest of their lives. I generally support the amendment. As others have said, I think some additional wording would be good to clarify that the policy should apply to anyone who has contact with a child. Last week's board meeting, Mr. Hopkins, you argued that the principal has sole authority over the classroom, and I know that's factual, but I spent 34 years in a classroom myself, teaching in Virginia public schools, and I know that in the real world, it's an impossibility for a principal to have intimate knowledge of every interaction, of every minute, of every day, of every child. They have no choice but to delegate to their teachers and their staff. And with that delegation comes the responsibility for the staff to also be held to the policy standard. Mr. Jones, you argued that we have no evidence of school division employees acting on their own, and I pray you are right that in Orange County, we do not have that. I don't know for a fact whether we do or don't, but I know nationally, if you look at this issue, we have a lot of teachers, and I respect teachers, I am a teacher, it's part of my very soul is teaching. I still teach, even though I'm retired. But we have a lot of teachers who are kind of going rogue sometimes, and that any staff member would want to withhold from a parent information of this kind of magnitude and life-altering consequences is just unfathomable to me. I think we have to hold everyone accountable by policy so that they know what it is. Statistics show an 80% increase in one year in diagnosis of gender dysphoria, and I think if you have any intellectual honesty at all, you have to admit that that kind of number doesn't happen organically. I do believe this absolutely is a social contagion, and people are recruiting our children for this lifestyle. And I think an important point is that principals, teachers, and staff do not have the training or the licensure, and that's a really important word, to deal with mental health issues. We need trained and licensed psychologists, counselors, and social workers to fill that role, and still only with parental oversight. Schools need to be in the business of teaching academic content. That's our jobs in a public school, academic content, not addressing medical issues without a license while withholding information from parents. I urge you to do the right thing tonight, stand up for our kids, and pass this policy with some additional language. Thank you.[1639.82][1639.82](applause)
Good evening, hold on. Good evening, Dr. Hornick and school board members. I am against the proposed changes to policy IGBC. On January 2nd, I came before you and spoke about my hopes and desires for the new year and that we could move forward and make Orange County an example of what schools should be, one which students should come to school and feel accepted for who they are. The school can be a safe environment where focused on learning and education and not on political BS which will divide us. A few weeks ago, I worked with a small group of individuals on the strategic planning team, from which I thought there was hope, and many people echoed the same desire for OC to be a school that other schools would desire to be like. During the strategic planning sessions, we heard from current students. The students gave us an insight in the current state of our schools, and frankly, we are failing them. Out of five students, two said they would return to OC. One said they probably would not return to OC if their farm wasn't actually here. Wake up! We are failing them. And one way is because of the policies and resolutions like this one. We are failing them because there are those that want to play political agenda instead of helping every student succeed. The students mentioned that there are many who don't feel welcome and don't feel accepted, who don't feel heard, who feel anxious. I heard them, maybe you will too, before it's too late. The National Institute of Health posted an article which states 82% of transgender youth have thought about suicide and 40% have attempted suicide. The article listed school acceptance as a protective factor which can help mitigate suicidal thoughts. This policy, however, will take that protective factor away. This policy change will not protect trans students. Instead, it will actually lead to out of trans students committing suicide. People do not commit suicide because of who they are, but because of the lack of acceptance of who they are. This policy does not increase acceptance, instead, it is another way of harassment and appears to be an attempt to force trans kids to remain in the closet against their will. This policy implemented can also lead to an increase in homelessness in OC youth. 40% of youth experiencing homelessness are LGBTQ, and the most common reason for that homelessness is parental rejection. This policy is requiring school to forcibly out a student before they are ready, with no regard to the student's concerns or fears. This policy even goes as far as to try to define what abuse is or is not. It also creates issues with mandatory reporters and presents contradictory directions between policy and law. Therefore, as stated in Policy KL, if passed- Therefore, as stated in Policy KL, if passed, I feel the school board has exceeded its authority, acted arbitrarily and orchestratedly, and abused its discretion, and anyone who is aggrieved by the action can appeal to the court within thirty days, and I recommend people do so. Thank you.[614.79][614.79](APPLAUSE)
Good after...good evening, Mr. Hornick and members of the board. My name is Kim Hoosier, and I live in District 3. I'm a parent of a high school student and a professor. I oppose Mr. Hopkins' IGBC bill and urge this board to vote no on this harmful policy. In my twenty-plus years as an educator, I've had the privilege of having students in my classrooms that have faced extreme poverty to children of millionaires. In my classroom, I've had students of all races, numerous ethnicities, and yes, transgender students. As diverse as these students were, they all believed in the power of education and saw it as a path to a brighter future. I want to share a very abbreviated story with you about a remarkable student I had a few semesters ago. This student identified as transgender and had faced a heartbreaking amount of discrimination and inequality simply because of their gender identity. The student was not accepted by their parents, was kicked out of their home with nowhere to go because their parents would not accept them for the person they were. They faced depression and suicidal ideation, not because of their identity, but because of how everyone else treated them. They felt alone and isolated with very few options. At this very low point, one person saw them and took the time to ask some questions and eventually helped that student get back on their feet and enroll in college. After some time and support, that student began to flourish and proved to be an amazing student and a wonderful human. The student recalls how that one person changed their life and is something they'll never forget and never be able to repay. That person, of course, was a teacher. Mr. Hopkins' policy could create many more situations like my former student. Why would you want this? Mr. Hopkins, your bill is not only vague and divisive, but it directly opposes the tenets of education. Teachers do their job, certainly not for money, but to support students, to help them, and most importantly, to educate them. This bill erodes the jobs of teachers, administrators, and schools. Your policies would have educators focus less on education and more on an area that has nothing to do with their jobs, which is educating children. I cannot understand why this board is so obsessed with a student's identity. Your own pledge says that you will not discriminate against groups based on their sexual orientation, gender, or gender identity. However, Mr. Hopkins' proposal does just that. Please stop contradicting yourselves and putting innocent students at harm. We should be focusing on real issues like ones derived from your own data that includes low teacher pay, teacher shortages, low SOL scores, high absenteeism, and a racial and economic achievement gap. But this policy proves that some members are more concerned with playing politics rather than with the future of Orange County students. I find this unacceptable and appropriate and a slap in the face to the many educators that are out there day in and day out, working to help our children grow and become better people. You should be ashamed for getting in their way. Teachers accept students for who they are and where they are. Why can't this board do the same? I urge you to do what is right and vote no to Mr. Hopkins' dangerous policy. Thank you.[810.44][810.44](APPLAUSE)
The next group includes KJ Potts, Laura Daniel, and Sarah Pillow.
My name is KJ, and my pronouns are they/them. And nobody respects that. I mean, boy-girl this, boy-girl that. It's really not that hard to say kids. Y'all should give it a try one time, one of these days. In fact, a month or so ago, I got called a faggot, and I addressed it to staff and admin, and guess what? They did. Absolutely nothing. So, that got me thinking. Staff is always saying that they will do something about it, but shocker, they never do anything about it. And at this point, I'm beginning to think that staff and teachers do not care. I mean, some do, and some I can count on, and others I can't. And that's really sad. So what you guys are trying to do is going to open the door to more bullying, and I don't think anybody in this room wants that. Thank you.[936.57][936.57](APPLAUSE)
I stand before you again to request that you vote no to the proposed policies by policy changes by Mr. Hopkins. The reason being first, is that with this new policy change, you are asking any school employee, per Mr. Hopkins on his explanation, to diagnose children. You're asking school employees that are not qualified and not trained to provide mental health diagnosis, which shouldn't happen. You know, with the exception of school counselors or social workers. Not to mention, you're adding an additional task to teachers on an already impossible plate that they have. Secondly, Mr. Hopkins stated at the last school board that there are no circumstances that parents should not be informed about their children. And I disagree with that. For example, you're not going to call the parents before you call CPS. And if you do, then there's serious issues right there, too. Because your first call legally has to be to CPS. So, it's relevant in this case because kids, and parents, and community members have stood before you and stated that kids are in fear. You even had a parent stand before you to say he disowned his own son because his son was gay. So it happens, here in the county. I can tell you, for example, in the beginning of the school year, you had a girl that was kicked out of her house because her parents found out she was gay. Just imagine what's going to happen now if you pass these policy changes. My last issue with this is that there's no criteria written whatsoever. So, if a guy wears a dress or paints his fingernails, are you going to call home? Are you going to diagnose him and say, "Oh, you have confusion"? What about if a girl wears a suit and tie instead of a dress? What if a little kid grabs a toy truck? Or a little boy grabs a baby doll, plays with it, and head start? Are they now required to inform the parents? Oh, I'm not sure, but you might have, your kid might have gender confusion. Or is this specifically about pronouns? And if it is, then you are specifically targeting trans children and non-binary children. There's got to be a better way. There can be a better way. But, Mr. Hopkins, you and the rest of the board failed to meet with parents in the community and come up with a better way that we can protect children and keep parents and the community involved. And again, this distracts from what you should be focusing on: education. But again, we're worried about the safety of kids. Why aren't you? I seriously want to know that answer. Why are you guys not concerned? Thank you.[1135.98][1135.98](APPLAUSE)
My name is Sarah Pillow, and I'm an Orange County member and a proud alumna of OCHS Class of 2012. Before I begin to speak about the proposed revisions to the school board's policy on parental involvement in gender identity, I'd like to reminisce with you all about my time at OCHS. As I often feel lucky to have grown up in this area and in an environment that allowed for my freedom of thought and expression, a freedom that allowed me, at the age of eighteen, to begin to come out to my friends and my family as a queer woman. When I think back on what gave me the courage to share my true self with the world, I think of not only the love and encouragement of my own parents, but that from my teachers and my friends' parents throughout my time at OCHS, including Ms. Sherri Page, current chairman of this board, who were insistent that no matter who I was or what I wanted to do in this life, I was worthy of love and respect from those around me. And you see, I feel lucky to have grown up in this sort of environment because I am lucky to have received that kind of support and encouragement. Transgender children who are forcibly outed by their schools through policies such as the proposed risk being rejected by their families. In a study for the LGBT Health Journal using data from thirty-five hundred trans individuals, almost half of those individuals reported attempting suicide or having a plan to attempt suicide. And over a quarter reported misusing drugs or alcohol to cope with the transphobia that they face from society on a day-to-day basis, which, just by the way, includes the kind of discrimination and, in fact, abuse that is outlined in the second bullet point of Mr. Hopkins' policy. These odds of death by suicide and substance abuse increase significantly when rates of family rejection increase, as do rates of trans youth in foster care homes, juvenile detention centers, and homeless shelters. The ACLU reminds us on their website that every person, including the students in our community, have a constitutional right not to have intimate facts about their lives disclosed without their consent, including their gender identity and sexuality. Policies such as the proposed have a real, concrete consequence for the youth in our community. They risk kids' lives, the lives of children, the lives of our future community members. These kids are our artists, our scholars, our firemen, our athletes, and yes, even our future school board administrators. I hesitate to think of what would have happened to me if I had grown up in this kind of environment, one filled with fear and hatred and discrimination, and I worry about the futures of our youth who are being told that who they are is something to hide away unless they want to be punished for the crime of their very existence. Before my time is up this evening, I would like for us to sit with this question. Why exactly is it that the school board is so adamant to pass and enforce policies that will almost certainly result in the deaths of trans children in Orange County? Thank you for this opportunity to speak.[1326.76][1326.76](APPLAUSE)
The next set of speakers includes Jude Milton, Sari Jaeger, and John Floyd.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and school board. My name is Jude Milton, and I'm a junior at Orange County High School. I am here yet again to speak out against Mr. Hopkins' harmful and misguided policy proposal on gender identity. Unlike Mr. Hopkins, I recently spent three days working with a diverse group of Orange County community members to discuss the goals and plans for the Strategic Planning Committee that would guide the future of Orange County public schools. One of the major points and concerns of Orange County citizens is the safety and well-being of all students. Let me repeat that: of all students. Mr. Hopkins' proposed policy directly goes against what the community and what the students already said was needed and what they want. Orange County schools need to be safe for all students, not those that just conform to Mr. Hopkins' perceived societal norms. His policies would create greater anxieties, suffering, and stress on a student body that has already experienced too much already. His policy assumes that all students have safe and secure home environments, but unfortunately, as we all know, that is not the case. Mr. Hopkins' policy could lead to very negative outcomes where students suffer. Why would a member of this school board want to create more pain and more suffering on their young students? I cannot understand why anyone would want to bring this much negativity, this much hate, and this much division to the community. This is a community that I've grown up in, a community that I've loved. But what I am seeing happening here is breaking my heart, to see people I know, people I love, and people that are very important to me feel like they are not welcomed. And they feel that they are not welcomed because of the actions and the decisions of this school board. I feel nothing but just shame for you and what you do. I urge each and every one of you to vote no on Mr. Hopkins' policies, and just do what is right. Thank you.[1492.33][1492.33](APPLAUSE)
Hello again, Dr. Hornick and members of the school board. As a resident of District 3 and a parent of two small children, one of whom is a kindergartner at Orange Elementary, I'm here again compelled to speak because I disagree with the direction this school board wants to take Orange County public schools. I am close friends with members of our town's LGBTQ community, many of whom are parents or students themselves. I am vehemently opposed to Mr. Hopkins' revision to policy IGBC. His policy is directly modeled after the Forced Outing Bill HB 2432, which was defeated in Virginia State Senate Committee, even before it could go to the floor for a vote. That alone should show you that policies such as these aimed at further stigmatizing LGBTQ individuals, placing them in positions of vulnerability against their will, have no place in Virginia, and especially not in our schools. Mr. Hopkins has indicated that he wishes to reduce suicide risk in LGBTQ youth, but the statistical facts and overwhelming majority of comments you keep hearing from people with personal experience indicate that this policy would do the exact opposite and further harm these children. These children could be your children when they grow up. These children could be your grandchildren. Their lives are literally in your hands. LGBTQ youth are not inherently suicidal because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. It is because of how they are treated and stigmatized by people like you with these policies. Only one-third of these individuals experience parental acceptance, and yet you want to force everyone, even the two-thirds that risks parental rejection, into having the most difficult conversation of their lives before they are ready? Forty percent of homeless youth identify as LGBTQ, and the number-one reason why they are homeless is because of parental rejection. Fifty-five percent of LGBTQ kids say that school is actually an affirming environment for them. But if this policy passes, how much less affirming will it feel in Orange County than it already does? This will exacerbate the rift that we already have and mistrust that so many students have for their teachers, for the administrators, and even their peers. This policy also puts undue burden on the already overwhelmed and overworked school staff. We know they're overwhelmed because we can't retain good teachers. This policy will force teachers and administrators to perform a governmental overreach into parenting. You don't want teachers to get back to the task of simply educating, it seems like. You'd rather they police these moral issues for your political agendas. The second bullet point, in Mr. Hopkins' proposal attempts to define that parents not supporting their child's gender identity isn't child abuse, another gross overreach by the school board into matters of parenting. I think we can all agree, please, let our schools get back to the desperately needed refocus on education. Scrap this policy entirely.[1690.15][1690.15](APPLAUSE)
I wish to express my opposition to the proposed parental involvement in gender identity revision to policy. I do believe that parents should be involved and informed in all aspects of their child's rearing and education. And I believe it is the role and the responsibility of the school system to involve and inform parents by making communication open. While caring and concerned individuals do exist at all level in the school system, the overall track record of the school system of involving and informing parents is subpar. During my more than fifteen years with students in Orange County school system, I have observed administrators from the building level to the school board level weaponize the control of information. I believe the proposed resolution is an example of this practice. The proposed resolution does nothing to promote overall involvement or informedness, if that's a word, of Orange County parents. Rather, it singles out for special scrutiny vulnerable students whose very existence bothers certain members of the community. Members who we know from their own comments and postings believe their political views and religious beliefs have a role in the lives of other people's children. If it is truly the position of the school board that informing and involving parents is important, demonstrate that by abandoning this discriminatory policy which targets one class of people, a very vulnerable class of people, and... one class of people, a very vulnerable class of people, and make policy decisions that result in students in all situations having access to free and open education. Thank you.
The next set of speakers is Cameron Hamilton, Steve Keeler, and Sandy Harrington.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here, Madam Chair, members of the school board. I want to thank you for your time. I want to also compliment Mr. Hopkins on his brown blazer. It's a color that's not worn very often these days, so I like your attire, sir. Bold move. I just want to lighten the mood a little bit and talk about the big picture. I'm kind of astonished we're even having this conversation. I think that the Fourteenth Amendment and various other cases that I'll reference here in a moment have established the role that parents have in the well-being of their children. I think everyone on both sides of the aisle here would argue that the only intent we have is to foster prosperity and the ability to thrive in our children for great success, and that's what education is meant to do, to prepare children one day to embark on a new life, a new journey as adults, as sentient beings, able to be self-sufficient, not being reliant exclusively upon others, but able to go forth and succeed with the optimal success, even though that was two words back to back. So the cases that I'm going to reference here have really affirmed what I think are the roles that parents have in the lives of their children. And so before I begin that, I'd like to affirm Mr. Hopkins again for the position that he's brought forth. I think it is an appropriate representation of how the school board should be affirming the roles that parents have in their children's lives. But again, I find myself wondering, why are we even having this discussion? How was this even a topic? How was this even a legitimate concern to think that we're going to conceal potentially life-altering issues, life-altering, highly complex emotional, spiritual, and arguably physiological matters, and exclude parents from it? How do we have to adopt a resolution whereby we're going to indicate that parents will be involved when they should have always been involved? The notion that a parent is not informed with the matters of their child is incomprehensible, is utterly incomprehensible. When your child commits a criminal act in school, parents must be consulted. When your child commits a behavior, an assault against another, it is incomprehensible to think that parents will be shielded from this. So let me just affirm this resolution, and I think frankly, as a society, we really need to come to grips with the fact that these aren't children being outed by their teachers, these are children that are choosing to express themselves in the public forum, and that's certainly their right to do so. I don't think any of us would object to that. However, the notion that by a public outing and by involving parents in the lives of their children, it's a false argument. It's not truly there. Children are choosing to do it on their own accord. So I'm at 12 seconds, I probably don't have time to reference this, but I think Meyer v. the state of Nebraska, Prince v. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Wisconsin v. Yoder, Cleveland Port of Education v. Phil Fleur, and Moore v. East Cleveland, among many others, support this position. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Steve Keeler, and I am also surprised that we are here tonight talking about this again, especially since we're trying to make policy on something that's already law. Governor Youngkin on September 16th, 2022, signed an executive order putting into effect something that repealed and replaced the previous policy concerning parental knowledge of what was happening with their children. In a quote from that new policy, we can see what Governor Youngkin was talking about when he said, "Parents are in the best position to work with their children to determine: A) what names, nicknames, and/or pronouns, if any, shall be used for their children by teachers and school staff while their child is at school; B) whether the child engages in any counseling or social transition at the school encourages a gender that differs from the child's sex; or C) whether that child expresses a gender that differs from the child's sex while in school." End quote. Our governor's policy restored parental rights that the previous policy pretty much disregarded completely. I think the major point that he was making is this in a nutshell: Our children are not property of the state. They are members of our families. Parents are the primary caregivers and protector of those children, and at no point do parents, by putting their children in a school, surrender those parental rights that are so important to the state, or county, or the school, or a principal, or the teachers. Any policy that in any way takes the parents out of the picture needs to be totally disregarded. Some time ago, you see, I was a parent of twin boys that attended public school and private school and homeschooled, and anytime there were decisions that needed to be made about certain situations that came up, I was the one that handled them because I knew what was best for my children, not the school. We are our children's first teacher, first protector, first caretaker, first counselor, and first and biggest supporter. And while I applaud Jim Hopkins for his willingness to stand up and put out this update to close this door, I'm afraid it leaves way too many windows open. And at this point, I think the best thing for this board to do would be to table this completely. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick, members of the board, community. My name is Sandy Harrington, and I have worked in public education for over 20 years. I'm currently retired and am a new resident at the Lake of the Woods, and I'm here just to say I've come to the last two board meetings to see how it works here, see the conversation, the collaboration, and the focus on students. And I was really excited and wanted to come tonight to recognize the hard work that Dr. Hornick has led and the staff has encouraged and participated in to go forward in the strategic planning process. Instruction and achievement, safe learning environment, family and community partnerships, teacher recruitment and retention and technology, those are the areas we should be focusing on right now, and I am excited about being a part of the planning team, the action team that will start to meet tomorrow. And I would say this other stuff is kind of a distraction. It's political, and it probably should be left on the political stage and not in public education. So I would encourage you to just continue to focus on our students' education so that our students can learn, our teachers can teach, and our parents can continue to be involved in their students' education. Thank you very much.
The last group includes Alyssa Waller, Emily Potts, Nicole Pappas, and Betsy Brantley.
First, I'd like to ask you guys to please forgive me if I ramble. Unfortunately, while multitasking a Zoom meeting with the NAACP, picking up my son and trying to get here to share my voice, I left my speech behind. Some of you might think that's a good thing, but I got something for you. Good evening, all in attendance. I'm disappointed we are still focusing on policies that will only increase bullying, harassment, and many things outlined under student conduct. We already have students dealing with bullying to the point of now having depression and anxiety, engage in retaliation because they don't feel they are being protected. On February 6, I received a call from a frantic mother in her 40th week of pregnancy regarding her daughter's being in trouble for fighting a much bigger male student who had been harassing the youngest of the two for quite some time. Exhausting all avenues she felt she had, including blocking the group of bullies on social media and on her phone, she opted to maturely confront the young man and request he stop. This only led to her being called a slew of profanities and her becoming angry enough to strike out physically, then tossed to the ground, glasses broken, retainer broken, while a group of students, mostly male, stood by and recorded. How sad for a senior and a freshman in good standing to end up feeling returning to Orange County public schools was not an option. Maybe collectively we should focus on making our schools bully and harassment-free and less focus on political things such as gender identity. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Hornick, members of the school board, and all of you here. My name is Emily Potts. Last month, I told you that I spent every Monday last session in Richmond fighting against the 12 anti-trans bills that were voted down. And I also told you that every time this is brought up in Orange County or Richmond, I will be there opposing it. This is wrong, completely wrong, Mr. Hopkins. I wonder, why are you doing this now? Couple months ago, you said, eh, no, it's not a good thing, we're not going to do it. Well, you know what? You did this. Did you do this for a political reason? Or are you trying to undermine the superintendent who just brought up the Strategic Planning Committee and haven't even gotten the action team started, which start tomorrow? Come on now. He's doing an awesome job, so we got to give him that, and we got to give him the chance to do his job. This is nothing but what Ms. Quinn Turn tried to do, just changed a couple of words, like principal, from teacher to principal. And as you said last week, or last month, yeah, actually last week, that the vice principal will be the designated, and he will go to the teacher and say to the teacher, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you go and tell the parent? Causing the teacher to have more issues and more on her plate when we have a teacher shortage. We've heard it a couple of times. We have a very big teacher shortage. My kid has had four Zoom teachers for English. She just got a human being to stand there and be in the classroom. That's kind of messed up. You're worried about this and making teachers out kids? That's completely wrong. You've heard all of the statistics from everybody else, but I will say that the drugs and alcohol are definitely an issue with the LGBTQ community and especially the youth. We don't really have a lot of numbers because those kids don't want to tell. So come on now, you guys got to vote this down. This is stupid. Don't do this again. Don't bring it up. It was voted down in the General Assembly, so don't do it again. Come on now. It's wrong.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick, members of the board and community. My issue tonight is really more of a procedural process issue. I served 12 years on a school board, and I was just kind of surprised to see that here school board members are actually writing policy. My experience is that the school board discusses the intent of the public, you do the public's business in public, and then direct the superintendent and his staff to develop the policy. This gives you the assurance that that policy has been vetted legally, it's been vetted in compliance with other policies you have. Are there any, you know, differences, contradictions? And it allows you to rely on the superintendent and his staff as you're supposed to, because the superintendent is your guidance. Your superintendent is your resource, because that's where the knowledge about the education system, the education and the children really rests on this board, and that's why the superintendent sits with you on the board. May not be a voting member, but he's your equal, he's your resource. And when that policy is drafted, the superintendent brings it to you for a first reading. You review it, does it meet your intent? The public then has the opportunity at that first reading to say, oh, this is what came out of that previous discussion. Your input is put in, and if there are any changes, it comes back for a second reading, at which point the community can make their comments and you can make your vote. Everything is transparent, people know the discussion before, they know the discussion at the first reading, and they have their opportunity to be part of participants. What I'm hearing tonight is people have asked you to make changes to that policy that is brought forth to you. If you make any changes to that policy tonight, you can't approve it tonight. You must bring it back to give the public that is not here the opportunity to come back and say whether or not they agree with that. So tread careful. I mean, this is an important responsibility you have. Lean on your superintendent, lean on your conscience as well. I've heard some amazing things out here tonight, and I hope you take those to heed. Best of luck.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for hearing us all tonight. This issue, gender identity, is obviously a very delicate subject. Every single person that is in this room tonight would not be here were it not for the love of their children. My problem with this proposal is almost a generic one. This proposal strikes me as being fear-based. The school board decisions that are made should never be based on fear. They should be based on that love that we all have for our children. This proposal could potentially be the thin end of the wedge where that is concerned, and we don't want decisions made on that. I propose that you look underneath the surface of this whole subject to the basic definition of education. I won't be long. I was raised on the concept that the way we educate our children is to do our level best to help them grow into their own true selves. That's our job, to observe their natural development in whatever direction that takes them, and to aid them in becoming the unique, loving individual that they are destined to be and to love them as such. This is how we help them obtain their personal happiness. We do not do this by fear. We do it by love and acceptance. I fear that this basic premise is threatened by your policy. I oppose the parental involvement in gender identity. Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Okay. Hearing that no one else has signed up, I will declare public comment closed, and we will continue with business. At this time, Dr. Hornick, we have the presentation of the Head Start and Early Head Start.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, and we have Ms. Heidi Loras here this evening to provide the information, and we'll be seeking action later this month. And so Heidi, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members...
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Horneck. Tonight, I present to you the fiscal year 24 Head Start and Early Head Start budget, which is pretty straightforward. We are receiving an additional $44,770, additional from last year to this coming school year. Here you see on this first slide that the Head Start budget for those children is $982,000 plus. Early Head Start, $695,000, a little over, and the training funds are again the same as they have been for the last six years. And the next slide shows a little bit more detail. Here you see where our money is going for personnel for Head Start and Early Head Start, our fringe benefits, our supplies, the medical classroom office. Remember, we provide everything for the child. Diapers, formula. Food, of course, is different. We have the COLA. We are expecting our COLA to be around $50,000 this year. We also have a USDA line I pulled out this year that I didn't last year, just to let you know how much we spend. It's around $30,000 a year to feed all of our children. Training and the technical assistance, again, is the same. The NCON, you see the non-federal side is your portion that you fund for us, which is about between 20 and 25% every year. And that's so that we can have our program here in the county at our three different sites. So total, our total budget is $1.6 million, a little bit over that. Do you have any questions? Okay. All right. I'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this.
Make that motion to be accepted as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay. Next up?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The second this morning is approval of the policy revisions that were brought forward earlier, I guess last week it was, by Ms. Ayler regarding updates to policy for albuterol as well as naloxone, Narcan. And she is here this evening if there is any more follow-up, but we're seeking action tonight, please.
We did make the recommended policy wording changes. Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions of Mrs. Ayler?
No. I'd just like to make a public comment for, because we have a lot of people here tonight that weren't here last week. We went into this in great discussion last week, so I don't want you to get the impression that we're just doing this willy-nilly here. We talked about it a lot last week, and basically, I think the board's ready to approve it as presented.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve draft policy EB, draft policy JHCB, and draft policy JHCD-R1, and then the new regulations EB-R as presented.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ms. Ayler?
Thanks. And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Third was the approval of supplemental appropriations. Mr. Honnaker brought these forward last week as well and is here to answer any remaining questions you may have regarding federal pandemic relief bonus payment, which has been paid, as well as the supplemental appropriations, our third installment of payment regarding food service.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Honnaker?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the supplemental appropriations to the fiscal year 2023 operating budget in the amount of $542,280.34.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And finally, I just wanted to provide the board with an update. Had the good fortune, the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Harvey, the director of Art Center, and they were willing to engage in an MOU to highlight our cooperation on activities, and we highlight specifically how the process we will use to vet projects that are coming forward, and we use determining factors such as age appropriateness, connection to the standards of learning, and overall benefit to the students. And so, we have begun to receive requests, for instance, today received one for our students to participate in the Young Visions display, and so we are looking forward to continuing to work on that end, and appreciate the board working with us, as well as the Art Center Board, to complete the MOU and to delineate our progress and our cooperation moving forward. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck. All right. So, that provides all of the superintendent's reports and recommendations, and so now we are down to board member items, and this is consideration of the policy revisions. So, we'll turn it over to Mr. Hopkins.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the revision to policy IGBC as presented.
Is there a second?
A second with comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to address some of the discussion that was brought up tonight. I know I did have additional wording, but I wanted to start off with saying that I took an oath of office when I took this position, and that was to uphold the Constitution of the United States and Virginia. There's a lot of back and forth about what these policies mean. Some say it sounds discriminatory. The Supreme Court of the United States and the state of Virginia vehemently opposed that standard. I know the ACLU does not establish precedent. Only the courts can do such. But I think there are a lot of things that we can agree on, and that is the fact that all students are worthy of love and respect. Where we differ is what love means and what respect means. Additionally, my whole platform was on parental rights, and to suggest that the Orange County Public Schools is okay with hiding information from parents about their students is absolutely incorrect. The policy J states that parents will be notified immediately of suicidal risk by the school counselor. So, I know that's one thing that's been brought up a lot, is the risk of suicidal thoughts, but there is protections in place for that. Additionally, the policy JO authorizes the release of reports of many different things to parents. That includes psychological reports, educational reports, medical, sociological, and other assessments. So, that information cannot be hidden from parents. If students feel alone and isolated through this process, why would we want to encourage that? We need to have a rally of support behind these students. Educating is the job of the teachers, and we agree on that. So, we need to focus on that. We need to not have the teachers suggest that they are certified counselors and can create plans in place for students without proper certification, without involvement of the parents. I also like to touch on the fact that as school board members, we are authorized to create and draft policy. The Virginia School Board Association unfortunately indoctrinates a lot of school board members to suggest that the superintendent is to be supported by the school board and not the other way around. Dr. Horneck has been an immense asset to this community, and I appreciate everything that he's done in guiding us and coaching us through many different things. But for these reasons alone, I don't feel that this policy even touches the notion that parental rights matter. So, for that reason, I will not be supporting this policy tonight. My motion would be to table this for further discussion so we can include all aspects of parental rights.
No second or motion? I don't have any, I have comment.
Okay.
The one question I have is, you know, I dip from many buckets. Number one, I've got three kids in this school system, and if something ever happened and one of my children committed an act of violence against themselves, and I knew it could be prevented, I would be all right, livid, just like you would. We've got some opportunities here as a community. I know there's protections in place. You know, what I do for a living, I work a lot of cases that involve sincere victimhood and that have evidence to prove that. Not innuendo, not conjecture, not just willy-nilly. It has to have meat on the bone. I do believe that our kids, our children are ours. The state does not own my kids. I will give them the lessons in life based on my faith, and you can imagine what my faith is, to do the right thing, regardless of who the person is. When no one's looking and you're doing the right thing, that's when it matters. I have tremendous faith in this superintendent. Dr. Horneck is a godsend for this community. He cuts it from both ways, and we sat in this group with the strategic planning, and a lot of these folks are in here right now, and there was a lot of good things that came about. We talked about having Paramount was the social, emotional health of our kids. Then, when a kid struggles with gender identity, it's going to be a struggle. The reality of it is, is some parents aren't going to accept that. So, we got to, you know, nothing is ever on or off. It's never up or down. There's always a continuum, a nuance. So, that's why I support table in this Ms. Quinn Turn's motion. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
So, the policy as written, it's not clear to me what problem this proposed policy change is solving. It does nothing to advance parental rights and does nothing to protect our children. To me, it's vaguely written. I'm also trying to understand why this change is being added to this specific policy. Most, if not all, policies should be evaluated, and I welcome developing a professional method reviewing teaching, training, and potentially modifying policies is necessary. I believe Dr. Horneck has created a committee to review policies recently. I do, however, reject to a one-size-fits-all VSBA policies that are not getting the job done for our teachers, students, and parents, which is who I am here for. To be clear, I'm not going to be a part of some political game at the expense of our students and parents. I will not support this policy revision, and if we decide to table it, I would be okay with that.
Mr. Hopkins?
Well, obviously, we're going to table this, but I would like to speak to a couple of things. One is the lady that was on a school board. She doesn't know, but I just want to inform you that the wording here is not the first wording I submitted. I submitted to Dr. Horneck and his staff. We went back and forth on the words. My other school board members saw other wordings, so the idea that I just came up with this all on my own is not really correct. And I really don't have any problem. I just wanted to try to get out that the parents have a right to know, and we have other school districts in our state that don't agree with that, and it is a political issue. Maybe we should just put it off. It's okay with me. I was just trying to, I was trying to write something that would not go into what teachers need to do or whatever thing. It just seems to me, first is, if you read it carefully, the first one, it doesn't even address all transgender students. It only addresses ones which are distressed. Now, if we have a student in the school that's distressed, that's when the school has to step in and do something. Now, what I was trying to say what they should do was, first thing, contact the parents. That's what we do with all distressed students. I mean, the school's not into transgender stuff. We should be in reading, writing, and arithmetic, but there's other things that happen. When a kid comes into school and falls down and breaks his arm, we can't say, we can't deal with it because that's not reading and writing or arithmetic. We get in and deal with it. And when a child is in your classroom and distressed, and the ones that are going to be distressed are probably in elementary school, if I, from what I've read on this subject, I think the right thing to do is contact the parents. I actually think my board thinks that too, but if they want to pass on this tonight, it's fine with me.
So, I would agree with my colleagues. I don't think there's anyone on this board that isn't in agreement that parents are the legal guardian, and they are the parental guardians of their kids. Having two kids of my own, I understand that. I do understand where Mr. Hopkins was coming from on some of this. So, we should be about educating our kids. We should be about making sure that they are on grade level. We should be making sure that they have the money and the resources to further their educations. We have a problem right now that in this county, we don't have a career and technical center. We've got bigger problems worrying about where are we going to educate our kids and where are we going to advance them into their next level in their education versus trying to decide if they want to be called Bill or Sally. You know, that is conversations for their parents. That is conversations that they need to have at home. But my stance is that we need to be thinking about the bigger picture. We've got kids leaving the school that don't have jobs, not sure what they're going to do. They're not college-ready. They're not prepared because they're not, I didn't go to college. I went to a trade school. Thank goodness I wasn't college material. Thank God there were college career centers out there for us to have, to be able to prepare, raise our kids, and live productive lives. Sorry, the word just went totally out of my head. But, so, that's what we need to be focusing on, and let parents parent. So, I agree. I think Mr. Keeler said it first. I agree with you 100%. Think we ought to table it. So...
I call the question, madam.
Okay. All in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, point of information, to table this, how far out are we going to be tabling this discussion? I don't want this tabled indefinitely.
Excuse me? Right in here?
She doesn't want it tabled indefinitely. She wants a timeframe.
Ms. Quinn Turn asked that it not be tabled indefinitely. My suggestion is, is that we still wait for DOE Governor Yonking to come out with more guidance on this. Would be my suggestion.
Sounds good to me. I'm in favor of that.
Does anybody have any idea when that would be? Because we've been waiting for a year now for this. Right. I would like to suggest 60 days to review.
Well, I think we could suggest 60 days, but if the governor has made no initiative and moved forward on this, that 60 days isn't really going to do us anything.
Well, let's just say until he, he's going to officially announce it sometime. It could be even this month or next month. Let's just make it until he makes an announcement, and then we'll have to sit down and try to write something that meets to that, whatever he puts out. That seems reasonable to me.
Everyone in agreeance?
For now.
Okay. All right. Moving forward. Thank you. So, at this time, we will entertain closed session certification, please.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of people personnel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2.
2.2-3711A2 for early admission, waiver of compulsory attendance, out of county, out of district request, and student discipline.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're in closed session.
That's very good.